...meet prior to this meeting in a work session to kind of go over the equity audit and our strategic plan and the alignment of those documents. And so there will be sort of more information with subsequent meetings to come. With that, Dr. Ricky Smith, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, thank you Chair. There is one change this evening in deference to the number of our teachers who are also parents and have to navigate multiple schedules this evening. We will be moving and requesting that we move the Golden Hedgehog Award presentation to section A and then A and then B would move down in order to see.
All right. Hearing that, I would entertain to move a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion is made by Vice Chair Hymes and seconded by Director Miles. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing that, we'll move to a quorum vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With that, we will move to formerly C but now A of our recognition and good news, which is the Golden Hedgehog Awards presentation.
Chair Irvin, Vice Chair Hymes and Board. This evening it is my distinct pleasure, as articulated in Board Policy ACC, to present the Golden Hedgehog Awards for the 22-23 school year. This was done, again, in alignment with Board Policy ACC where the Tiger Towalton School District articulated its commitment to every student achieving or exceeding academic proficiency in reading and math. In support of this commitment, I established the annual student proficiency growth goals of 5% or more for all K through 8 students in reading and math and 8% annually for historically underserved student populations to ultimately achieve the district target of 80% or more students who are proficient in reading and math by 2027. Student growth is measured by the formative assessments resulting from the spring of the previous year to the spring of that current school year. This evening, it is my pleasure to present the 2023 Golden Hedgehog Awards to you. And as I read your name, please, principals, bring your amazing staff that did amazing work this year forward, if you would, and circle in a horseshoe ring, if you will, please. It is my pleasure to award to Bridgeport Elementary for meeting the 5% and 8% goals in reading academic outcomes. To Charles F. Tigard Elementary for meeting the 5% and 8% goals in reading academic outcomes. To Deer Creek Elementary for meeting the 5% goal in math academic outcomes. To Durham Elementary for meeting the 5% goal in math and 8% goal in reading academic To Mary Woodward Elementary for meeting the 5% goal in math and 8% goal in reading And to Fowler, uh, Claire, there's still celebrating, so we're going to give them a minute. All right. Well done. Excellent representation. And to Fowler Middle School for meeting the 8% goal in math academic outcomes. And again, I stress to the board, and I want our teachers to hear it, this is not possible without you and without your dedication and the work you do every day on behalf of these children. So please hear clearly from me and from all of us here this evening how much you are appreciated, how much your work is appreciated, and I'm about to give you the most beautiful award that you'd ever want to have, that you can start to hang in your office, and I know that we will see you again next year when you hit again your 5 and/or 8% goals. So with that, let me go ahead and give you this lovely trophy that I know you've all been waiting for. So one moment, please. them here in the horseshoe would be great.
You want us to make a garment?
Yeah, if you want, if you don't want, just a little bit. Make sure your words have been. All right. Kind of like Christmas pictures.
I know.
All right, we all good? All right, I'll sneak in here on the end.
Okay, you're good. Right there. Ready? One, two, three, one, two, and three.
Chair, I think we're ready for what was formerly A and is now B. Chair, I think we're ready for what was formerly A and is now B. Good evening, Directors. I will call up all of our Directors here that have an administrator that we'll be introducing Along with the new administrators in the house.
Good evening, Board, Board Directors, and I'm Dr. Lisa McCall. I have my honor and privilege to introduce to you some of our new administrators at the elementary level. First, I'd like to introduce, where is Tim Gross, who is, he's not new to TTSD, but he is new to CF Tigard Elementary, Tim Gross. Then I'd like to introduce Dr. Bobby Brown, who is our new administrator at Towalton And then next, he's not new to TTSD, but new to his role as Assistant Principal at Bridgeport Elementary, Tim Blackburn.
Good evening. I am excited tonight to introduce Chris Harvey Foltz, Associate Principal at Hazerbrook Middle School, and Jess, oh, sorry. You can bow, you can bow. And then Associate Principal at Tigard High School, Jessica Renhart. And then we also have a new principal at Tigard High School, Melissa Barron.
All right, we're making history today. So for the Equity and Inclusion Department, we have our first manager, Social Service Manager, Kelly Nagnishi.
All right, I'd like to introduce in our TNL Department, our new administrator for Title III, All Things Language, Two-Emersion, ELD Programming, and many other hats as well, Alison McKay, who is in the business for over 24 years and is ready and willing and able and has jumped in and doing a great job so far. Awesome.
Well, I was going to talk really slow because I know Kelly Shelton's almost here, but you can look at her picture up there. Kelly Shelton is the new Associate Director in Student Services. She's responsible for some of the work we talked about today, PBS, SEL, and what you may not know is she has a big part in being the support principal at LifeWorks. And she was a teacher at Byram and an SEL coach and now has joined my team.
And then Board, it is my privilege to introduce to you again Director Len Reed as our new HR Director and her partner in crime, Associate Director, Mr. Brian Bailey. So please join them. And so it is my profound pleasure to please ask Directors CFO Moore to the daisiers. And with that, I believe Director Rose, does that, pictures, please? Yep, everybody forward. You know the drill. Hopefully Kelly will get here.
Yes.
All right. One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
If I might also, please have Director Moore's wife, Tammy, join us. And if I might also have Sarah Maravsta, please join us, Controller. Thank you. I think we can find you two more chairs. I'm going to make sure this is all right, very good. So this evening it is my, you know, not only my pleasure, but it is my privilege. I have not had this opportunity in 23 years to work with someone of David's caliber and to be able to share the information that I'm about to share with you is truly a privilege for me as a professional. And so with that, I start first, he will receive two awards this evening. So the first one is from the Oregon Association of School Business Officers, also known as OASBO, Outstanding Service Award. This award is given to those two nominees who must demonstrate that they are a current member of OASBO, that they have provided extended and significant service to the organization and to, most importantly, the advancement of school business administration in Oregon, and then be of good moral character and show professional integrity throughout their careers. The 2023 OASBO Outstanding Service Award, which I have here, and I'm going to hand to Director Moore, is given to the Chief Financial Officer for Tiger Towalton School Districts as he is an outspoken, notice, outspoken, and we don't hear David do that very often, but clearly he, and I will say that I have actually seen that, advocate for public education, a leader among peers, and often one of the first to offer support and guidance to new business managers. David has spent hours advocating at the Oregon Legislature, and I have observed that, and I might also add hours advocating on the Hill in DC to our federal legislators. He serves as the Chair of the OASBO Audit Committee auditing the association's finances. Colleagues of David say he treats everyone with respect, kindness, and patience. He holds himself accountable and crafts questions for clarity to get answers that help all schools of all sizes and locations in the state. David is a true champion for students in Oregon and more than worth it to receive the Outstanding Service Award from OASBO this year. Please join me in congratulating David for this award. And now it's my pleasure and privilege to award both David and Sarah the GFOA Excellence in Financial Reporting Award. TTSD's Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the year ending in June 30, 2022, which is the purpose for being awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by Government Finance Officers Associations of the United States and Canada, also known as GFOA. The Certificate of Achievement awarded to Director Moore, CFO, and to Controller Sarah Maravsta is the highest form of recognition for excellence in state and local government financial reporting. In order to be awarded a Certificate of Achievement, a government must publish an easily readable and efficiently organized annual comprehensive financial report. The report must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles, meaning that it is accurate, and applicable legal requirements. TTSD has achieved this award for 35 consecutive years. A Certificate of Achievement is valid for a period of one year only, and we believe that our current annual comprehensive financial report continues to meet the Certificate of Achievement Program's requirements, and we have submitted it to GFOA to determine its eligibility for our 36th award. With that, please join me in congratulating CFO Moore and Controller Sarah Maravsta. Board, I leave it to you for any comments that you might have.
I'll just say what a point of pride for our district. I first met, I'm brand new to the Board, but I first met David when I was a part of the Budget Committee and found him so helpful in understanding my role, being on the Budget Committee, and what an honor to be on the Board of a district that has received such an honor for our CFO and could not be prouder of our district. Thank you for representing us so well.
I want to echo those sentiments of pride for our school district, our school Board for having this, you know, point of pride of you all winning this awards and just want to say, you know, from this side, the way that Director Moore just explains everything, I think is one of the best things for us because you do that with such grace and such like, you know, so that you make it so easy for us to understand what is happening in the very complex things that you're explaining to us, you make it so that we can actually understand it. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I just want to echo the other comments. Appreciate the great work and having that source of excellence in our district. We've seen a lot of achievement in our work today, and this is an excellent bright spot. Thank you.
So it comes as no surprise to me that we received the GFOA Award again. I'm getting a little jaded about it now. If we didn't get it, it would be a nightmare. But ever since I started with the Board, I've now worked with three different CFOs. And we were in a strong position when I came on the Board. We had a good CFO. We've always had good CFOs. But 10 years ago when David came in, I could tell we had a really great CFO. And it's just every year, it becomes clearer. And the fact that you are so clear in the budget, explaining what's going on and all of the nuances of the incredibly complicated information is so helpful to the Board. But also, I want to make sure that my fellow Board members know, I've spoken to many Board members in other districts, and when I explain to them our budget and our CFO and what the finance office does for Board members and how our CFO explains to the community what's going on with all of our complicated budgetary matters, other districts don't do that. They don't have CFOs who take that care of their communication. And I really value that. So I just want to say thank you, David. You've made our jobs so much easier. I rest easy knowing that the district is in good financial shape and in good financial hands. So thank you, and well deserved.
And I would just quickly echo what all of my colleagues have said, and I've watched both David and Sarah at various committee meetings, other meetings, and their ability to, number one, pull numbers and information, pull it together or pull it really from their brains because it's all in there, and then explain it in a way like others have said that is so helpful and to whatever that particular conversation happens to be is really remarkably remarkable and feels kind of like wizardry to just be like, oh, here's this percentage of this, and Director Moore, you do this a lot, which I love, is just like, let me just crunch these numbers really quick in my brain, and they're all pretty much correct. And so, but it's really helpful when we're having conversations that aren't necessarily, you know, financially, like that's not the center of the conversation, but to have that information and someone that you can trust with that information and the patience for folks like me where that is not their strong suit, and to be able to explain things in a way that's understandable is really remarkable. And I think like everyone has said, just for the community members to know and our families and district folks, that we have such fiduciary responsibility in-house and that there is such care taken and such thoughtful approaches to our financing is really wonderful. And I thank you for all of that work and Sarah, all of your work as well.
Thank you so much, Board and Chair. I would be remiss not to also offer thanks to Tammy sitting here for all of the hours as she's looking around, you know, for all of the hours that you have allowed us to have David onsite and has taken away from your personal life. I have a spouse myself in this room who understands that, and we cannot do this work without that type of support. So thank you. Thank you for what you do. You are just as much a part of that and this other award as well. So thank you so much. With that, I believe we need pictures, is that correct? Yes, that's right. We all take a picture. So please bring the awards and Sarah and Tammy.
You can never leave us, Director Moore.
All right. And with that, we will move to student rep reports. So Atticus, would you like to, or any updates, anything that you would like to give for the first little bit of school? Absolutely. Someone grab a mic.
I'll start. So for the Tigard High side, there's honestly kind of a new wave of like kind of that fresh energy that's in the building that kind of wasn't there when I left. It could just be me, but I think it's, I think it's a little bit of everyone. And I think students are excited to meet their new teachers and their new admin team. But something that students aren't so feeling great about is new 10:30 lunch or what I call brunch. But we understand that it was due to federal law that we had to move it from 2:00 to 10:30. Fall sports are in full swing. Football won, Tigard High Boys Football won their first two games, and I was happy to see Dr. Sue cheering along Sandy's game. And as of the last time I checked, it's still early, but girls soccer is still number one in the state, and I still need to go to a cross-country meeting, but I heard our team has a lot of talent.
How about now?
Sorry. So I'm new Tigard High School representative, and something that I've noticed in like the past few weeks or like right before school started was there not much like communication? Not many of the students knew about how we were going to have a picture day before school started or like any of like the club meetings due to them not being on the Instagram, which is where everything is like kind of put out. And so that's just something I wanted to share and talk about.
Towalton is also really excited about the year. I think students are just probably excited to be back for the schedule and such and to meet their new teachers and get their new classes. To come to echo what Owen was saying, they're definitely not pleased about the 10:30 lunch. Every single one of my teachers has just like stopped class. And they're like, can we talk about this 10:30 lunch? Because this is insane. They all hate it, but they have to deal with it. And that's okay. We are, so I'm the ASV president at Towalton, and we have new affinity reps in our class. And so we're just barely starting off the year with them, and it's been really good. And we're working on just planning our events with a more inclusive, equitable lens with their voices. And we also have a lot of student diversity already in the class, so we're just all working together for that, and I think things are going to go really well. We have our Welcome Back Assembly this Friday with the whole school, so that will be fun. And girls soccer, I think they won their first two games, I'm pretty sure, so they're doing well. Cross-country, same thing with their meets. I think they've scored well. And then Jamie will talk about football.
Sorry. So, I'm new Tiger High School Representative. And something that I've noticed in like the past few weeks or like right before school started was there not much like communication. Not many of the students knew about how we were going to have a picture day before school started or like any of like the club meetings due to them not being on the Instagram, which is where everything is like kind of put out. And so, that's just something I wanted to share and talk about.
Twalton is also really excited about the year. I think students are just probably excited to be back for the schedule and such and to meet their new teachers and get their new classes. To come to echo what Owen was saying, they're definitely not pleased about the 10:30 lunch. Every single one of my teachers has just like stopped class. And they're like, can we talk about this 10:30 lunch? Because this is insane. They all hate it, but they have to deal with it. And that's okay. We are, so I'm the ASV president at Twalton and we have new affinity reps in our class. And so, we're just barely starting off the year with them and it's been really good. And we're working on just planning our events with a more inclusive, equitable lens with their voices. And we also have a lot of student diversity already in the class, so we're just all working together for that. And I think things are going to go really well. We have our Welcome Back Assembly this Friday with the whole school, so that will be fun. And girls soccer, I think they won their first two games, I'm pretty sure. So, they're doing well. Cross-country, same thing with their meets. I think they've scored well. And then Jamie will talk about football.
Football is 2-0. We, the players had to go up to Tacoma, Washington last Friday. And so, that was a journey for them, but they did come out with a win. And to add on to the school lunch thing, I know that not a number of not only students, but also teachers have just been skipping breakfast entirely and then using that 10:30 time to eat their breakfast.
Hi, I'm Atticus. I'm the new Creekside High School Student Board Representative. I met with my principal and we went over a few different things that he had wanted me to mention, that one, some things being that he feels as though the, the staff communication has got, has improved a lot and the way things are running have, are seeming to go very smooth. And as of what I have been noticing, I have been noticing, I feel like there has been a lot more attendance this year that I've noticed. And although like school has just started, I have been noticing that at Creekside, attendance is a very complicated situation. I also noticed that the freshman orientation went very well and I wish I had gone, but I had to miss it. There, they made lunches for each other and like they're like working socially on like building really, so that, you know, things go smoother when you have better friends through school. And also, they are starting a new ninth grade cohort. And so, that's starting out well. We're also relaunching the Youth Advisory Board. So, one, so at my school, we have like a bunch of advisors. One student from each advisory is going to be a representative for that advisory and we're all going to meet. I will be a part of those meetings. And so, I will be able to get a point of view from pretty much everyone at the school because each representative will be talking with their advisory about certain subjects, bringing it back. We're all going to talk about everything together. And so, I'm looking forward to be a part of that. As well as just a side note, although this isn't, you know, the best thing to be talking about, I have been noticing ignorance and bigotry as well as some patterns that I've, I've noticed in the past with being transgender, existing in every, every scenario. It is always a struggle. And I noticed that with pretty much all of my friends who are transgender as well. And I believe that there are things as a Board that we can also do to work on stepping towards, you know, me feeling and all people feeling comfortable with just being at school in general, because that has been a huge struggle for me. And so, I just wanted to add that. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for all of you and sharing that. And thank you, Atticus, for sharing that with us as well. And we will move to Superintendent and Board Communications, Dr. Ricky Smith.
Thank you. So, I want to welcome our student reps yet again and thank you so much for your voice. And Angus, specifically to your concern relative to transgender, that is a piece that the Cabinet is working on opening a process forward to the Board as to how we can help our entire community learn and, and understand and be inclusive relative to transgender issues. Relative to the lunch issue, unfortunately, this is an outcome of giving you a little extra time to sleep. But the USDA is very clear about their federal rules and that has been an unfortunate outcome relative to that. And so, as we do with all things, we, we have an opportunity to come together collaboratively and make some harder choices perhaps, you know, do we want to sleep, have a little more sleep or do we want to start earlier in the day and, you know, stretch the lunch hour out? And so, I think those are all, all pieces of that that, that have, give us an opportunity to have community, you know, conversation around and, and decide, you know, what can we live with? So, but thank you for bringing that forward. Please know that that's also front and center in the work that, that we're doing at the Cabinet level. With that, I wanted to say that yes, indeed, we had a strong start. I think probably one of the strongest starts that I've seen in the past six years. And you will hear specifically this evening from Assistant Superintendent McCall and Director Fields concerning the first week of school. And today, we welcomed, and it's hard for me to even grasp this, the incoming class of 2036, our incoming kinders today and, and preschool students. This is the first year that I personally have observed academic instruction, the first day of school consistently across the Board, regardless of level, whether it was elementary, middle, or secondary, almost without exception. In addition to the regular nuts and bolts, this is where you put papers and this is how we hang up our coats and so on and so forth. So, that was an awesome thing to see. And it tells me a great deal about the work and, and the commitment that our teachers and our administrators have been doing in the last several weeks. And then relative to the enrollment report, you will receive that from HR Director Reed again, as we normally do this time of year. Bless you. And you did, as a Board, receive a full report from me in your update. So, if you have not had a chance to read that, please, please do. And I want to emphasize that this, we are engaged in what has always been our annual process. So, we, beginning in mid-August, we start to take a look at how enrollment is building. And I, we then meet weekly and then move to daily briefings. And I want to commend Director Reed and Assistant Superintendent McCall, as well as Secondary Director Fields and Director Kinch and Associate Director Bailey for keeping, giving me now daily briefings relative to the numbers and what fiscal moves we are making to address where there are bubbles and where there are concerns. We are now currently in the 10-day drop that will end on September 18th. At that point in time, those will establish our, what we believe to be our final, even though they're not final because they continue to be fluid, but our final enrollment number that will be reported to Oregon Department of Ed. Right now, we are running a bit ahead in terms of ADMR, not ahead in terms of, of enrollment that was projected. We are still behind there, but in terms of the weight, we are running a little bit ahead. What is going to be critical is where all the other districts are. If all the other districts are also seeing a lift as we are, then things will remain fairly flat in terms of the state school funding that we anticipated. If however, we are an outlier and we are having a greater lift than others, that may result in a few more dollars coming our direction, but that has yet to be seen. What I want to emphasize is that, number one, we are very much aware and we are very much paying attention. We are applying, as we've reported to you, ADM where it is most needed and we will continue to do so as we have ability to do so, as we work with the, work with the, the schedules based on the 10-day drop. One additional piece is that today, we met with the City of Tigerd, Mayor Lube, Counselor Wolf, and City Manager Steve Reimer at the Alberta Rider Cabin. There has been some concern expressed by our community relative to the disposition of the cabin. And as it has been, as part of purchasing the land where Alberta Rider School exists, what included the cabin where Alberta Rider herself lived and, and died. And so, as part of the sale of, to the District of the land, we were required to register the cabin on the Historical Registry. And so, now it is in need of significant support. And so, the conversation today with the City of Tigerd, as it is a historical site based on the type of architecture of the cabin, the City of Tigerd has come in full partnership and is very much interested in having a conversation about how to, how to deal with the cabin going forward. And so, City Manager Steve Reimer knows a number of firms that deal in exactly this type of issue in communities. And so, we'll be reaching out to them to come and potentially do a, an evaluation and then report to the City and to the District as to options for managing this type of property. And so, we very much appreciate the City's partnership and willingness to engage with us in that conversation and provide and honor our obligation that was, we committed to early, in the early 2000s in the building of Alberta Rider. I also want to encourage all, if you have not yet been by, dear Creek, please do so. We have goats that we are using in terms of ground maintenance and they have made a mighty impact on the blackberry vines, the poison ivy and other, all things edible, I guess, to a goat. And it's really been remarkable and it's a great deal of fun for our elementary students to see the goats about their daily business. And last but not least, and I leave this to Directors Zirschmeid, I had the opportunity to participate in a hot sauce competition with Representative Bowman and Director, a Counselor's, City Counselor, ye-hoo. I would say that we all survived and my tongue fortunately came back online sometime on Sunday morning. But it was a great, great fun by all and we appreciated Director Zirschmeid cheering us on to glory. So, with that, that's my report. Thank you.
All right, Directors, updates. Thanks, Chair.
I don't have any updates, but just want to say that very appreciative of all the things that happened during the pre-service week and that made it so that our staff was ready to come in and, and like Dr. Sue just mentioned, you know, teach on the first day or, or, or do what they needed to do in their classrooms, right? To make things more welcoming and to make things, you know, for the students to feel safe. And so, I just want to make sure that I let you all know how appreciative I am of that and how I can feel the energy within, you know, my own children, that they love being in, in the schools and they're, you know, just have those first day of school butterflies that, you know, are always great to see. And then, you know, on, on that side of, of the coin being, or on the other side of the coin being an educator myself, not being able to be there for, for them on the first day, right? Which is always something that is sad for us, but, but it's good that they have people in schools that care for them and that they know that they're going to show up and, and be welcome. And so, that's, I really appreciate everything that everybody does at TTSD for. Not all, all of our kids, but, you know, mine as well.
Well, it's great to be back from vacation. I was gone for most of August, so I appreciate everyone being here when I wasn't and it's good to be back. My family was a little tired the first week of school, but in spite of that, we did see the same energy, a strong start, engagement seems up and processes seemed a lot smoother this year as we continue to recover from kind of our shutdown time, time period. I, I did also hear about that, that early morning lunch. I know some people are concerned about those who rely on school lunch, having more difficulty bringing in snacks later in the day. So, that concern, I did hear about that also and hopefully we can figure out something for, for snacks for those students that get hungry in the afternoon. I also have heard some comments about a shortage of foreign language classes, especially at the middle school level, but I'm excited to hear our projections might be coming in. And it's also exciting that people are excited to take foreign language classes. So, I really appreciate that. And overall, a, a fun and exciting start to the school year. I know Templeton Elementary has more time for science and writing because they have, were able to bring in more dedicated specials teachers. I was able to also go to the CFT Tigerd PSO meeting and look at some of the great work that they're doing. So, a lot of great work happening and excited to be back. Thank you.
Yeah, I had the privilege of visiting several schools on the first day of school this year. And I started at Art Rutkin first thing in the morning and it was amazing to see these kids walking into this building that has been something we've been dreaming of and planning for and hoping for and planning for and hoping for, for so many years to come to fruition. And here are these kiddos walking in the door so excited. Some of them didn't even know it was a new school. They were like, why are there balloons here? I'm like, well, because it's a new school. Oh, I thought it was just me that was new. I had a moment which I wanted to share with the Board. As you all know, Sarah Ruff is Art Rutkin's daughter who now teaches at his namesake school. And she told me that the morning, the morning of the first day of school, she couldn't sleep, no surprise, and she was sitting at her kitchen table at 6:00 in the morning and decided it was silly to be sitting at her kitchen table. And so, she went to school at 6:00 AM. And she watched the sunrise over her dad's namesake school. And she said she walked around the grounds and she talked to her dad and all good vibes. And it was just the most wonderful moment. And so, I know that that energy in that school from Art, from his daughter, from the teachers who are there, from the students who are there, is going to be remarkable. It may be a small group of students so far, but based on what I'm seeing of the houses being built just up the hill, I suspect that by the end of the year, it will be significantly larger. I know one round of houses will be finished in October and another round will be finished in January and I think we'll see a lot more families moving in at that point. I also got to visit Bridgeport, which was wonderful as always, and Byram also, always wonderful, great energy. And then I mentioned briefly in the work session, I got to go to Twalton High School on Friday to visit the intercom bio class. And I just want to reiterate what an amazing, profound class that is for the students who are in it. The fact that senior mentors are leading the class, are developing the curriculum, what the students are doing as part of their team-building exercises, obviously with a teacher at the side, the guide by the side to make sure that everything is appropriate and academic. But really, an amazing space where even on the third, fourth day of school, the students, you could see they, they were expressing their vulnerability, they were bonding with each other, they were learning about each other, they were kind to each other. It was really an amazing thing. And it's a program that if any of you have the chance to, I know you all work during the days, but if you ever have a chance during the day, fourth block, to get over to Twalton High School, I highly recommend you, you get in touch with Chris Llewellyn and visit his class because wow, it's something.
I can't follow that. I don't have, I don't have an update. I don't have much to add. I, I tried to visit my own daughter's school on the first day. I was not allowed to go in with her. As an eighth grader, I was told to not follow her into school. But I, I just want to say that I've, I've heard really wonderful things about the start of school. And, and just like Director Jaime said, I, I just want to say thank you for all of the work that administrators and teachers have done this year. I've, I've heard really good things about the start of school. I really appreciate our student reps for their reflections on the beginning of school. Always candid reflections, which is so great for the Board to hear. I've heard really good things about communication and the strong start of school this year and, and just appreciate, and you can tell all of the hard work that has gone into the strong start this year. And, and just really appreciate the enthusiasm and the energy that has gone into starting school really strong. So, thank you.
I also don't have a ton to add. I think since our last meeting, we had the, but prior to school starting, we had the back-to-school event, which several of us were at, and that was always a good time with Mr. Amberfields at the helm DJing, as, as he refers to himself sometimes. So, but he, it was great energy. There was a relay race. There was an incredible spoken word performance that was absolutely amazing. And so, that just felt like, again, like these really wonderful moments that kind of just kick off the year in a really special way. Similarly, both from teacher friends and kids, it seems like it's been a really lovely, not without hiccups, but a pretty smooth and energetic sort of back-to-school time. So, I, and again, I think a lot of that has to do with continuing to kind of think about how do we use that time, the pre-service days thoughtfully and continue to kind of hone what is, what works best and how that best, how we can best help our teachers prepare for this first week. And I think we're, we're starting to see that in these, these days and these weeks ahead. So, that's all I have. And with that, Patty, I just want to, oh.
So, I'm curious, did anybody get a recording of, of Justin doing that poetry? Because, do we have it recorded? Yeah, the spoken word? Even better. Okay, excellent.
It was incredible.
It was, it was amazing. And yeah, I would love as many people as possible to see that. So, perfect.
And then Patty, I just want to confirm, there's no public comment? There is one, yeah, so there was one written comment that came in that they did not want read at the meeting, but will be part of the minutes. So, that will be there. All right. All right, so with that, we will move to our first reports and discussion item, which is enrollment update with Director Reed.
Good evening. I have David here alongside just to be available to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer about some of the details that may be more in his end. But I'm here to go over the enrollment report. So if you had the opportunity to take a look, I have some pieces to highlight. So first off, as Superintendent Dr. Seuss has stated, the district numbers are continuing to climb, but we are still below the number of student enrollment based on where we are at this point last year when we pulled the report. So currently, we are at 11,312. Last year, we were at 11,466. However, as a result, we do have, we've had some bubble areas, especially in elementary, that we have had to address over the last few weeks and through the summer that I'd like to highlight. First off, at A R E, they've had bubbles in first grade, so they have done a blend where they received an additional instructional aid to be able to provide support in that blend. Bridgeport has received an F T E to address the first grade bubble that they had. Byram today has received three F T Es, one for Kinder, one for four, five blend and two, three. And they may be taking that Kinder and doing a K one blend to help bring down numbers there in their first grade. C F T today has received two F T Es to address first and second grade. Deer Creek has received one F T E to address their Kinder numbers. Durham Elementary is pretty well-staffed, but they did receive two L S As to help within the context of their student body. Mary Woodward, looking good. Metzger has received two F T Es today to address second grade and also L S A support for classroom contacts and twee. So two, actually two L S As today. Templeton has received three F T Es today to address Kinder, a four, five blend and first grade. And then Twalton Elementary also has received three F T Es today, four, five, third and second grade. And there is a potential that we may be looking at additional support for first grade. So that's where we are in terms of elementary, you know, numbers and supports. You know, we're still monitoring, we're still talking with administrators, administrators are connecting with their staff and their association amongst, you know, what's going on in the buildings. And of course, we try really hard to prioritize, prioritize our Title I schools. All right, so just in those numbers, that's like 17 F T Es brought back into the fold. That's not counting our L S As and those pieces that are additional supports. So let me talk a little bit about secondary and what goes on there. So earlier in the summer, or really right before school started to ramp back up, we've heard from Twalty who needed more spaces in their health P E classes. And so they requested a .5 F T, which we were able to grant. In addition, Fowler needed .17, so a section, a class also for health and P E. So we were able to grant those pieces. And right now, what we're doing and what secondary is accustomed to doing is really waiting till we see the whites of their eyes and taking the time to really count seats. I know that you may, you may have heard about numbers at the secondary level. Trust me when I say as a secondary former principal, it's typical, all right? To see those numbers on paper, but what we don't know is actually who is showing up. And also, this is the time in which counselors are taking a look at those actual numbers and are balancing classes, making movements throughout these next couple of weeks. Those are the types of things that are happening. Also, I know that Dr. Ricky Smith also communicated that sometimes we have educators that do want higher enrollment because they know attrition and also because they don't want kids to miss out on their program. So they allow for that and that is a conversation in which they have with their principal to say, hey, I'm willing to do this, take this on. And then also, like I said, right now, it's just a matter of waiting for that 10-day drop to see where things settle. After that, administrators will reach out if they feel there, there's a need for additional F T E. But a lot of this is time for counselors to do all of those balancing of classes and schedules so that to help drive down some of those numbers. All right, and so those, that's pretty much my highlights for this evening. Are there any questions?
So the 17 F T E you said that we've put into elementary so far, I know we had some in reserve. Have we now used up all of those reserves or do we still have some F T E left?
So we had some reserve in ESRS and now we are pretty much funding through or putting F T through S I A.
Okay. And do we have any, we don't have anything at the, at the secondary level in reserves, do we?
Say that again?
We don't have anything in the secondary level in reserves. We don't, because we don't do secondary that way, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
I was wondering, so I wrote the number down, but so it sounds like this year we're at 11,312. What was our projection that we thought we would get this year? If you have that.
Let me.
It's probably somewhere.
Yeah, you want to go ahead and answer that?
Direct question, I would direct you to the enrollment report in that yellow box at the end of the report and it shows you what the projection, the projected, projected number is versus what, what our actual is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the actual enrollment was projected, I believe, at 11,248. I don't have the number in front of me, but, and then related to comparing from an overall revenue standpoint comparison to last year or what we, what we budgeted, we had budgeted A D M, which is the average daily membership throughout the year on a cumulative basis. And again, this is just an estimate at that point, at this point. But we're estimating 11,436.97 and we budgeted 11,348. So we're above, we're above that target number by nine, approximately 90 A D M. As Dr. Ricky Smith was urging caution earlier, a couple additional things have to happen. The 10, 10-day drop, and again, as, as Director Reed mentioned also. In addition to, this time last year, there was a drop in enrollment of most of the large districts statewide. So what that did is caused the O D E during the fall to, to ask districts to update their numbers so that they could adjust the state school fund payments accordingly. And we don't know what that looks like statewide, it's still early. But it's likely if the O D E does not have us update the numbers after the first quarter, it will be after the second quarter. And so we'll have, probably by the second quarter, we'll have a good idea of what it looks like related to any adjustments to our state school fund amount for the year.
Thank you.
One of the things I'm really struck by as I'm looking at the, the numbers is how almost unnaturally clean the pattern is that we have at 12th grade, we have 900 students and then we have 875 in 11th and then it goes down until we get to the elementary level where we've got about 710 kindergarteners. And so I think that when we look at those numbers of classes, we can sort of see what the future is holding for us. I mean, there's always a bit of a bump from Kinder to first, obviously. But I think we can kind of see our future when we look at those numbers that are class sizes. Each one as it comes in is smaller than the one that's going out.
And Director Zershmeen, I appreciate your, your paying attention to patterns as you always do. I think the, the confound for us this year has been the fact, and Twalton Elementary was the first one to bring it to our attention, when we saw these bubbles starting in the lower grades. We expected them in the upper grades because they were moving on through from, from earlier, right? But, but it was interesting to see these increases. And, and what they were able to articulate is the fact that parents who had their child previously in private were now coming back in. The other piece with this is that we're seeing a significant uptick relative to McKinney-Vento families. That families are coming for the work in the Tiger-Twalton area, but don't have the ability to, to pay for housing and so they're doubling up. So it's those two dynamics and we're, we're watching that very closely to see if there's, if those who are coming in from private are going to stick because that could be a revolving door back and forth depending on, on where they stand. Because we want parents to choose what's best for their children. But I, I will also bring you a report relative to request for, for charter. I have not seen the number of requests for charter this year that I, I saw previously. So again, that's just anecdotal at this point, but we'll, we're tracking that as well.
Yeah, I was surprised by the relatively small number of, of students at Mitch this year because I believe we, they are allowed to have up to 300 and they're only 240, so I'm, I'm a little bit concerned for them and their model.
That was very, students, do you have any questions about numbers, enrollment, class sizes? Well, thank you for that. That was really helpful and explaining sort of the process too. I think that's helpful as well to understand. Thank you. All right, and then our next reports and discussion, our first week of school summary. Some cute little pictures.
Good evening again, Board. Dr. Lisa McCall and Director Amber Fields. It is our pleasure to share with all of you just a glimpse of the first week of school, pre-K to 12. And so Dr. Seuss, along with the rest of the board, have been out in schools helping out, but also getting a, a chance just to see all of the work and the efforts of our leaders as well as their staff that have put in to opening our doors last week. So with that, next slide.
So our real theme this year is around lift every voice, as we talked a little bit about earlier. It's really around setting conditions, so students, staff, families can engage in productive, engaging discourse. And so really this first week was around setting the conditions. So it was really exciting to see really centering of students, a lot of student-led work at the elementary, middle and high. I know from the parent's side, my daughter got a chance to be an ambassador and help greet at the elementary level and I saw a bunch of kids out there every day the first full week and both at middle and high with our web leaders and our link crew, just students engaging in small circles with other students to build community, to make that huge school feel, especially for our sixth and ninth graders, feel smaller. When I was over at Fowler, one of the sixth graders said, "I was just so nervous to come today, but this is really great." And so it was just nice to see that it felt welcoming, you could feel that positive buzz that was happening. So you don't have to hear our voices too much tonight because we're going to be able to hear it from folks in our schools. Next slide, please.
And with that, some of the themes that we noticed is, was really clear across all of our, the settings is emphasizing on building relationships, frequent check-ins for students, an emphasis on the embedded S E L as well as discourse and action. And again, our theme along with lift every voice is that bridge to academic rigor as a focus. We know that again, our staff in their pre-services, as we had an opportunity to hear from them, they set the stage for that work this year. And it's clear, and you'll see that in some of the slides, around building of expectations and norms, teaching of the routines, classroom agreements that are student-led. In one of the buildings, we also opened our door to our new school, Art Rutkin. And as I was going into the school, I heard one of the students during dismissal telling the principal, "Can I stay here? Do I have to go home?" And again, these, these things in our environment just doesn't happen. It happens with a lot of hard-working collective efforts. And so with that, you'll get a hear from some of our voices in our buildings. Next slide. And our next slide is just a collage of different photos that our cabinet took on their visit to the school. And again, today also was, was the first day of kindergartens in their seats. So let's see what happened last week. So as you can see from just this glimpse, that it takes everyone all the time and that's not only our classroom teachers, our nutrition staff, our consorio staff, our classified staff, our parents. When you went to the buildings, all the hard work, the floors, then it looked great and ready. But again, as a collective effort to make the beginning weeks of our 2020 But again, as a collective effort to make the beginning weeks of our 2023, 24 school year off to a good start.
Well, that's just one of my favorite presentations of the year because all those little humans and, and high school little humans, they're all little humans when you're grown up. And just excited and being there and the teachers, I mean, everybody, it's just, it all feels good and it feels exciting and it feels like that's the energy that I think we've all sort of in different ways felt. And so it's fun that, to have the video and the pictures just to kind of reinforce, like you said, all of the relationships between the teachers, the staff members, the administration, the parents, the community members, the kiddos are really working to make these kids have a really awesome year. So thank you.
Also that I really appreciate, I mean, in, in light of the context that, or in light of the, the conversation that we had about the equity audit and aligning that with the strategic plan earlier in the work session, really appreciate the fact that the focus for the first week of school was on setting the conditions and, and focusing on that and about, you know, the, I mean, just the, the overall focus on, on SEL. And I saw in some of those pictures, like, you know, meet the person who's responsible for your mindset and even that, the beginning of school, starting to focus on those, those things. And I'm seeing that alignment with what we were talking about in our work session. And, and that was just really inspiring to see all of that already coming into focus in the first week of school. So thank you for showing us that and, and really bringing that, that practice into view. That was great to see. Thank you.
I just want to echo the other comments. Really appreciate the great work and it's really exciting to see the doors open and the students in there, in the classrooms and making new friends and learning new things. It's really exciting times. So thank you so much.
All right. Well, thank you so much for that presentation. Before we get to our board reflection time, we did want to acknowledge that today is September 11th. And we wanted to just take a brief moment of silence to honor the memory of those who gave their lives on September 11th. So join me in that moment of silence. All right. Thank you for that and joining me in that moment of silence. At this time, we have our optional board of member reflection time. Does anyone want to utilize this time, that time this evening? All right. Then I will adjourn this meeting at 7:00.